There we go. Sorry. All right, calling meeting to order. First things first, public audience. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none. On to committee reports and Board of Ed Communications, Mr. Tindall.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Watson?
Nothing tonight.
Tara?
Well, I have to say last night's graduation was fabulous.
Yep.
It was amazing to see everybody in person. It was amazing to see the kids playing their musical instruments through their masks with the flutes and their, I mean, the efforts that they made for safety was amazing. But it's nice to see the choir singing together for the teacher who's done 5,000 virtual concerts over the last year. It was just wonderful. And so congratulations to the class of 2021.
Absolutely.
Great, great job.
Absolutely.
Nothing.
Nothing? I'm going to backtrack to Sharon, not to put you on the spot, but did you have anything you wanted to share?
Okay. So give me one second.
You want me to come back?
Yeah.
Give you a few minutes? Mrs. Levin?
Everything I need to update, I will do so later in the evening.
You are the hit of our agenda tonight.
We're going to be talking about Equity Council later in the meeting, but I want to give an update that our process for the Director of Equity and Access is well underway. We had a wonderful day in this room today interviewing a handful of exceptional candidates for the job.
Was this your first time with in-person interviews?
Uh, we did the Squadron Line Assistant Principal in person at the, at the end, just the last round. So, and we are down to finalists. And so our finalists will be returning on Monday. And we expect to have a candidate to bring to the board shortly after that. So we'll have to arrange a special summer meeting to get that person approved. But it was a really, really important day in here today. So it was excellent.
So glad to hear it went so well. Sharon?
Ditto.
Ditto.
As our representative on the committee.
I was the representative today. So really, really good. So a couple of things that I wanted to follow up on. One, to our administration, I wanted to follow up on the, do we have an update on the Columbus Day? Didn't know if we did.
The procedure if we wanted to make it.
Yeah. I mean, not, not defined. We've collected a bunch of information, what other districts have done. And I think we just need to take some time and define a process and come back and talk about what the board wants that discussion to look like.
Right. Okay. So frame the discussion once we get that. So we'll.
Can we track that as an open item for all business?
Yep.
Sure.
Will do.
And if I can make that recommendation. So that's one. Then I wanted to, I know that there's been a lot of activity in, I know Lydia's normally here to give us an update.
Yep.
So there was a bill that was passed around mental health. And I didn't know how, if, if any of this impacted us. And it allows K through 12 students to take up to two mental health days during the school year. If the district has something in place, then this adds two of those days. So that's something that we may, I don't know if we do or we don't, but it's something that we may want to.
I know that CAPE has put together a update, legislative update.
It's also Monday, Monday at 11:30.
Okay.
CAPE has a legislative update. Any new bill that passed.
Okay.
The two attorneys who work with the Education Committee do a very thorough presentation of what all the districts need to know about what got passed.
Yep.
Usually, sometimes when a piece of legislation gets passed, it's immediately in place for July 1st. Sometimes it's for the next July 1st. So it's that meeting that happens at the close of the session, and it's scheduled to be a virtual meeting this year on Monday morning. We'll get all the updates. And then depending on what has to go into place quickly, that's when the Policy Committee may be called to come into play.
Okay.
Usually, we're kind of catching up a year later.
Okay. And that, those were the two things that I had. The rest is for our presentation.
I was aware of that bill. Do you know if it passed?
I had that it had passed.
I don't know if it passed.
So it's passed out of the legislature, but hasn't made it to the government?
Doesn't it close on my night? I know that it's.
Legislature closes the ninth?
Yeah, tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow they adjourn.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know if it passed.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Sarah?
I just, you know, the graduation for me is always a very, very special night as superintendent. And I think what everybody has been through this year, students, staff, administration, board, I think it was really gratifying to be able to look out on that. I know it was hot, but a beautiful night, beautiful setting. Listen to the kids' speeches. Their speeches were just on point, very meaningful. Principal Patrina gave a great speech, reminded us all that he was hired on March the 11th. Pandemic started the 13th, and he actually enjoyed the 12th.
Yes, he did.
And, but really, lessons learned in this time period, and really encouraging the kids to take that and not go back to normal, but to go and create a new normal. And I thought was really a wonderful message and something that our district has talked about coming out of this. I think we have a unique opportunity to really define our priorities and be clear about them and gain momentum as we head back into the fall, which is something that I know we're all very excited about. So it was a, it was a great night.
It really was. It's, you know, I say it every year. It's the highlight of my year. I love sitting up there and watching every kid be so excited about what's coming down the road and seeing them come together as a unit. It's just such a great night. So kudos to all the speakers and just so glad to be a part of it. I met the choral director for the first time last night because we haven't had any concerts to go to. So she did a fabulous job and brought so much joy and light to those kids.
Great energy.
Terrific, terrific.
Can I say one thing, though? This was my first, everybody knows, this was my first year going to Simsberry Graduation. And I said to Sue, I've always, because I've watched some of the prior years, not too long ago, but our band, our music department, I mean, should just give a show. I mean, because they are just so good, especially at graduation. I mean, you sit up there and you're just like, you want to just really stand up and rock. But I'm sure everybody would be like, sit down, sit down. But they are just so good. I mean, they really, really are. So if everybody's out there listening, just know that we wanted to dance up on the stage, okay?
All right. So now we're into recommended actions. So I need approval of the minutes of the May 19th special meeting. Can I get a motion there, please?
A motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You. Approval of the minutes of May 25th, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 25th.
I'll second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
First to now.
Okay, a couple of different sets of actions tonight. The first are additional retirements for this year and the retirements that came in over the last few weeks. First is Kathy Marco, who is a speech and language pathologist. She actually works with the assigned students to our preschool doing speech and language work in that setting. 26 years in Simsberry. And Kathy is going to move on to do some private work, but taking her retirement from the Simsberry Public Schools. And then Sandy Valaro, who has been a guidance counselor at Simsberry High School for my entire time there. She actually started as a health teacher when she started her career and then became a guidance counselor. So she is, she was already on the list for next year to retire, but decided that she's going to go one year earlier than that. 33 years of service to the Simsberry Public Schools, over 20 of those in school counseling. So congratulations to Sandy and Kathy and their families. And the motion is there for your action.
All right. Can I get someone to make that motion, please?
Sure. I'll move that the Board of Education accept the retirements of Catherine Marco and Sandra Valaro effective June 30th, 2021.
In a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a lot of years.
For all those years of service.
That's an amazing commitment to our students.
It really is.
It's really cool.
I'm sure you're wooed by everyone.
Yeah. And then the other set of actions is more of the announcement of your intent to retire, but that we still have you for three more years. And so two members of our Henry James Social Studies Department, Kim West, who's currently got 33 years of service in Simsberry, I think all at Henry James.
Yes.
Yeah. It's been completely at Henry James and is a staple of that Social Studies Department. And then Lori Worthing, who's been with us for 15 years currently. I hired Lori Worthing at the high school as a special education teacher. And then she transferred into Social Studies and has been there for about 10 years. So I haven't seen Kim and Lori since they sent me this notice, but I think they cooked this up because I got their two emails within five minutes of each other. So I think they probably were having lunch and said, this will be funny if we send this to them both at the same time, right? So, but anyway, fortunately, they're still around for three more years. So I could give them a hard time about making my heart stop on an afternoon last week. But congratulations to both of them. And we're glad they're going to be with us for a little while, but you do need to make that motion for their intent to retire.
I regrettably make the motion to accept the notice of intent to retire of Kim West and Lori Worthing effective June 30th, 2024. It's a lot of really great teaching that's happened there, and students that have been touched by them very significantly.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. That's 116 years on this piece of paper.
Yeah, it's something, isn't it?
That's a lot.
That is a lot. Wow.
Really special.
You don't see that longevity everywhere. All right, renewal of the superintendent's contract. Do you want to take that question?
Yeah. So over the past several weeks, we've had meetings with the board and then subsequent meetings with, with Matt. And we, you know, very much appreciate the strong leadership, especially in this past 12 months, that Matt has, has shown for the district. Everybody knows the difficulties we've had this year, and his leadership has helped us through scheduling, just doing things that were unprecedented and kind of uncharted territory. What, what people may or may not also know is there were a lot of other things happening in the district as well. And Matt has restructured his administrative team, the central office. And, you know, we've, with Matt's leadership, gotten through several very important initiatives, bringing the Equity Director position forward, the Latimer Project, and working all of these things with different people in and out of positions. So we very much appreciate Matt's leadership in the district and the strength that he, that he, that he gives. I'll make the motion unless somebody wants to. Okay, I will move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's contract for the 2021, 2022, for 2021, 22, for, with a salary increase of 3% for 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have to second Todd's words. I mean, it's been an amazing, incredibly difficult year, and you've kept your team calm through the storm. And I think that we are very fortunate that you all work so well together, and there's a reason for that. It's great leadership, and we are very appreciative of you as our superintendent.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Absolutely.
You have our full support always, and we thank you for really keeping us running.
Unless you kind of bug us, and then your note might not have our support. I'm just saying. We can't blanket statement.
It's an honor and a privilege, yeah.
Well, we're happy to have you here. And with that.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, enough.
Enough.
Enough. Hold on.
Uncomfortable.
Can you sign it already, you guys? Has he already signed it? We've got to get it signed.
He signed it. I haven't decided if I will.
Sign it. Sign it.
All right, here. All right, moving on. Where are we? Approval of Northwest Community Bank Scholarship.
That's to me. So there's actually two scholarships for the board's consideration. The first is from Northeast Community Bank.
Northwest. Community Bank.
Northeast.
Northeast.
Mine says Northwest. This is Northeast.
It says that on the agenda.
Sorry.
It's our fault.
My apologies. And they would like to set up this scholarship as their bank was established in 1860, and it's dedicated to assisting and improving the quality of life for individuals and families in the community that it serves. So it's one scholarship in the amount of $1,000 to start next year for the class of 2022. And each year thereafter, the scholarship will be awarded based on merit or merit and need to a graduating senior. And that decision would be made by the Simsberry High School Scholarship Committee.
That's wonderful. Can I get a motion to approve this scholarship, please?
I'll do it. I'll move that the Board of Education approve the Northeast Community Bank Scholarship to be dispersed in 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for supporting our kids. Next is another scholarship.
Another scholarship in memory of Professor Gilbert Mathieu Jr. So Mr. Mathieu, Dr. Mathieu, was a college professor for almost 50 years. He grew up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. He was the first in his family to attend college, and he received his PhD at age 24. So this scholarship is being established by his children, Gilbert Mathieu and Sharon Mathieu-Russus. And the scholarship will be in the amount of $1,000, starting for the class of 2022 and continuing based upon the amount currently given in the memorial fund. So there is a plethora of different criteria the scholarship committee can use for this award. I would like to highlight the phrase that Mr. Mathieu always loved, the phrase, "an all-around good kid." So we look forward to this approval of this new scholarship.
Yeah, I'm going to improvise, I think.
Yeah.
Because it's, I'll move that the Board of Education approve the Professor Gilbert Mathieu Jr. Memorial Scholarship to be dispersed in 2022. Is it 2022, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is wonderful. I think it's really, really cool. I love scholarships that really are for the whole community, and I think this will be great. I really appreciate their support of our students.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much to the Mathieu family. We appreciate being honored that way.
He had a PhD at 24.
24, that's what I can't get over.
That is a studious person.
The school is 16, I'm trying to backtrack.
Yeah, that's what I'm like.
How many things concurrently?
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we get to accept a gift from the Squadron Line PTO. This is my favorite meeting.
Listen, it's fantastic. So certainly, the Board of Ed has a policy that any gifts from the public to the school system, anything that exceeds $1,500 requires your approval. So tonight, the Squadron Line PTO would like to purchase a portable smart board for the Squadron Line Media Center for the value of $3,495. And as you recall, there's been an update to that media center space, and this will help with some of the versatility of that space and its use for the Squadron Line community. So there is a motion there for you to approve.
Anyone at all?
I don't have the papers.
I'll do it. Move that the proposed gift of $3,495 to Squadron Line should be approved, schools should be approved.
One second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With a hearty thanks to our PTOs, the support that we get from all of them, who's so wonderful for us.
Absolutely.
BOE summer meeting schedule. I'm making a motion that we.
That's me.
Oh, I'm.
That's you.
That's me, sorry. So we normally, although last year we did not, we normally cancel our summer board meetings. And gratefully, being on better footing this year, we are looking to cancel June 22nd, July 13th, July 27th, August 10th, and the 24th. And if we need to meet, we will have a special meeting in the place of those meetings, and you would all be noticed. So I'm looking for a motion to cancel those regularly scheduled board meetings.
I move that the Board of Education cancel regular meetings scheduled on June 22nd, July 13th, July 27th, August 10th, and August 14th, I mean, August 24th. 2021.
A second from Sarah. Okay. Any discussion?
Looking at me.
All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries. All right. So now I need to amend the agenda if we could just, for information reports, just to switch things up because we have guests here.
I make a motion to amend the agenda and move five, item 5B to 5A, and move item 5A to 5B.
Can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Favor.
Of amending the agenda? Great. All right, motion carries. So that would mean you're up, Mrs. Levin.
Going to make a technological adjustment?
I'm just going to make a quick adjustment here. And in doing so, would like to call three members of our Equity Council up to the table. We have Becky Rosenthal, a math teacher at Henry James Memorial School, Reverend Kevin Wykel, parent and local clergy member, and 2021 Simsberry High School graduate, Madison Allen, who's been on Equity Council for two years and will be attending Georgetown in the fall. So along with Sharon Thomas, we will be providing the board an update relative to Equity Council this evening. So certainly, this is a slide that you've seen in the past. And it really points to equity being at the heart of our strategic goal, both actually one and two, around a caring and compassionate school culture, but also around our, our strategic goal of student performance, the global citizen, and our vision of the graduate, which is so very important. And our work of Equity Council is to look at the issues that impact the Simsberry Public Schools and to make recommendations to you, our Board of Ed, that will guide our planning and implementation. So as you recall, last year, our work was around developing our equity statement. What do we mean by the definition of equity? What are our core beliefs relative to equity? And what is our stance? What is the actions that's going to get us to enact that definition? Over the course of this past year, we've been engaged in looking at a lot of data around our school and its impact on students. And we are going to discuss that process this evening and then propose to you some recommendations that will serve as a springboard to the next steps in this process here in Simsberry. So Sharon is going to talk a little bit about the recommendation development and that process that we went through this year.
So what we did, we had several meetings from over the last couple of years. And what we did was we came together in, I'll say about groups of, say, 20 to 25 people. And with the, with Carrie and.
Carrie Lord and Patrisse Nelson.
And Patrisse Nelson, I keep. And, and what they did was they worked with us around some data. And what we, we had monthly meetings, and we would look at the data in a large, you know, large amounts of data, okay? And, and our looking at the data, we broke into groups, and they had us, and I'm just going to kind of read from, we were given the data and asked to look at it from a standpoint of what were some of the assumptions and biases with the data, okay? Students, families, staff systems, and then based on that data, what have been our experiences, you know, leading to some of the assumptions with the data? Did we have any predictions as we looked at the data and some of the outcomes? And then what did we believe to be some of the common factors even as we looked at the data? And so some of the data that we were looking at had to do with, of course, our district. And it was the high school and elementary and the middle school. And it was categories like in-school and out-of-school, you know, suspensions. It was AP, it was broken English ELL. It was black, Hispanic, and it was disaggregated. And so we would start looking at it, and we would ask questions. Could we get the data even more broken down? Could we get information based on teachers? Could we get, you know, you know, just, we would just keep asking more and more questions to get it at different levels. And to the point that what we did was, we got to two high-level data points. And the two high-level data points that we got to were special education and discipline data. Okay? And so when we started looking at the special education and discipline data, you've heard us talk about, in that area, we saw a lot of it based on black and brown children. And we saw the rates being higher in those in comparison. Either, you want to add to that, Becky?
No, I, we have some data slides right here, Sharon, that, that we can share. So as Sharon, Sharon shared, and Tara, please feel free to, to pipe in as well, as you've been a very active member of Equity Council. But we looked at data relative to student performance. We looked at data relative to climate, discipline. And these were the two points that stood out very clearly to us. So here it is in a graphic representation. So you'll see that the blue bar graphs are the total of the Simsberry Public Schools population. So this is district data. And then the red bars that you see are the representation of special education students. So the first total M is males and females. So you can kind of see how that's distributed and overall what that looks like for special education numbers. And you know, you know, overall, our district special ed percentage is hovering around that 15% marker. When we break that out and we disaggregated it by race, you'll see that based upon overall population, white males did not have as high of a representation in special ed as in their overall population, nor was the case for white females. When you looked at black or brown males and black and brown females, you can see the opposite was the case, right? That there is an over-representation that went beyond their representation in the larger population. Okay? So that's what it looks like in a, in a graphic percent.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So on the previous slide, it said it was special ed confined to ADD.
ADHD.
Yes.
Is that, is that really where you found most of it?
That's where, that's where it stands out even more.
Okay.
So in, in just a couple of minutes, Madison is going to speak about the protocol that we went to, to ask more questions. So at first, it was, okay, special ed. And then we started looking at, is there a disparity between the actual manifestation in a disability and attention deficit and hyperactivity disorder was another light that stood out in comparison to other disabilities?
Okay.
That's a great question, Susan. The second data slide, this one represents specifically office referrals as how discipline was kind of codified. So again, you'll see very similar labels for males and females. And then the red bars this time represent a percentage of office referrals of that same population. So you could see the white males and white females, and then the bar discrepancy when we're talking about our black and brown males and females. we're talking about our black and brown males and females, but significantly more pronounced in our male population.
Sue, if I could just, on both of these, it looks like there's an over, well, I don't know how you want to say it, but there's a significant amount of Hispanic males in both.
No, so that is, black and brown are combined?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So, yes.
It was total, you're right.
Yeah. I got you. I'm sorry.
Not at all. So that's kind of the data that we teased out.
You have that data to Jeff's point at a granular level.
Absolutely.
For sure.
And this is just to clarify for anybody watching, we're talking K-12.
We're not concentrating on any one age level.
This is district.
Correct.
And we'll talk about next steps, about what this would mean at the building level, or elementary versus middle versus high school. Because we did some more digging there as well.
I know that this is part of the plan, but how is Simsbury, like, if we were to look at the state data, are they similar relativities, or are we...
We find these data points specifically black and brown males, overrepresentation in special ed, as well as discipline, a statewide trend and a national trend.
Right. Not that it changes anything with what we do. I'm just curious as to...
Are we an outlier?
Yeah. I mean, you know, we talk and we hear about this all the time, and it's powerful to see it charted like this.
Yes.
I have to say, there were so many people, and Sue, maybe you should say what the committee was comprised of. How many? We had some educators, we had people in the public, we had teachers.
That's a good reminder.
I think people would know who did all this work, because it was hours and hours and hours.
Months.
And months and hours.
To Tara's point, so to start out, I think we were doing like every month, and then people were so hungry around this that we kind of were, I think, bugging Sue.
You weren't bothering me at all.
So we started meeting more frequently because we were so interested in the data.
Well, you're trying to get to the root.
And we were trying to get to the root of it.
You had work to do, and you wanted to do it.
Yeah. So we were getting together like almost twice a month, you know? That, and so, only if you see it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're just trying not to band-aid. We're trying to do, we're trying to get to the roots. We're trying, we're not trying to slap a Band-Aid on a problem. We're trying to figure out why. The whys, the wheres, the hows.
Definitely the why in getting to the root cause, because if you don't, you can be putting great efforts of time and finances and just work time into something that may not change the outcome, which is, we want this data to look differently.
That's right.
Right? So that was very important to us. But to your point, yes, Equity Council is made up of board members, teachers, administrators, students, local clergy, parents, business owners, right? So we come from very different perspectives in taking a look at this and want to have a very transparent dialogue and then recommendations that will help us do better for all kids. At the same time, which I do want to share, we are also looking at this data as a group of administrators. And our administrators highlighted the exact same data points, and in addition, the high school said, we want to look at the AP representation that's disaggregated by gender, by race, by some of these other factors, socioeconomic factors. So we have a agreement there, which is a good thing, and we continue to delve into it a bit more. So Madison, if you would, talk us a little through this root cause process that we went through time and time again, and how that helped us get to some of our recommendations.
Right. So I was going to talk about the process that the Equity Council went through to get to some of our root causes. And the main thing that we used to do this was the Five Whys Protocol. So Sharon mentioned this earlier, but it was really emphasized to us to not identify solutions based on our own assumptions upfront. That's why it's called the Five Whys Protocol. We brainstormed five times through during our meetings to get to questions and other data points. So looking at the identified data points that we saw earlier, we came away with some ideas about, specifically for me, I was in the subgroup about discipline data, so that's largely where my experience comes from. And we noticed that there could be something about implicit bias within that system. So we began to ask more questions that came about through this protocol, about what's the annual climate survey like? Is there some sort of cultural thing that's going on at the school? What is the language that teachers are using on the referral cards to describe students? Is there a common definition of what should be referred for discipline across the high school and the Henry James? And we also looked at, are these expectations being taught to both students and teachers in the same way? And are they getting the same information? And through this, we uncovered a lot of more data, specifically about the common definition when talking about referrals. We found that in Henry James and the high school, that the booklet that was given to teachers, the definitions of what constituted a referral were different, and oftentimes was very ambiguous. So through that, we saw that a lot of implicit bias could come through that system. And that's where we mainly looked, and that's where our main findings were. And that leads us to believe that there should be a common definition through this that we'll talk about later. But that's mainly how the Five Whys Protocol led us to a lot of these things. Lots of questions were asked, and a lot of data was gathered.
So Madison, that's interesting. So you started with the data, and you guys even pulled basic policy procedural documents of the district and kind of cross-referenced.
Right. It's like, what's going on there?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I was going to say, you were clearly really digging hard.
Oh, yeah.
And glad you found what you did.
Great. So Kevin is going to speak specifically to the special education recommendations and what we found from that data dive for our consideration.
I first want to say, it's an honor to be one of the people representing the Council because they are, it's just a tremendous team, dedicated and just really concerned about this topic. And then also just to say, you know, this is challenging stuff. And so just to all of you and everyone who cares about this, for listening to this, it's just really important, so thank you. So these are the special education recommendations. Number one, to provide implicit bias training for all teachers and staff members with fidelity. So this comes from the basic understanding that we all have attitudes towards people or associate stereotypes with people without our conscious knowledge. It's especially true, of course, when it comes to race, because racism is such a part of our culture, sometimes we hardly even realize it's there, let alone how we react to it. So providing implicit bias training for all teachers and staff will help all teachers and staff gain insight into the unconscious preferences and the reflexive discomfort they bring into the classroom and into the school. We say with fidelity because it's important that this is more than just checking off a box, right? We need to be intentional that every single teacher and staff person is receiving this training so that all teachers and staff can have a better understanding about their unconscious biases.
I really like the addition of the "with fidelity." I think that adds a lot to that. It's a small sentence, but that adds a lot to it. I like that.
Good. Second, to provide culturally responsive training for all staff members in order to aid in developing cultural competence and educating all children. So while implicit bias training focuses on what teachers and staff bring into the classroom and into the school, culturally responsive training equips teachers and staff with tools to respond to the existing culture in the classroom and in the school. So culturally responsive training will give teachers and staff instructional strategies to reach all students, whatever their race, whatever their ethnicity, to achieve at high Looking at number three, has to do with eliminating the inequities within the intervention process and assessment. So as was pointed out in the earlier slides, and Sharon talked a lot about it, the data shows that black and brown students are getting through special education assessments more quickly. While the intention on behalf of these students, of those doing the assessments, of course, is good, it's always good intention, just trying to get students the help that they need, the impact of this can be harmful. So for example, there's substantial data that suggests students with IEPs don't end up in honors or AP classes. There's also strong national data that black and brown young men, especially with IEPs, end up in prison at a higher frequency. So we need to look more closely at the assessment process and put a higher emphasis on strengths as opposed to weaknesses, especially when it comes to our black and our brown students. And finally, it's essential to create systems and structures for continual and ongoing data analysis for discrepancies within placements and achievements, because data speaks. If we provide implicit bias training and culturally responsive training, focus on impact as well as intent, and our strengths, their strengths more than weaknesses, we should find that the data will reflect the work. Studying the data will be how we know if the work we are doing makes a difference.
So in going through this, did you actually find that the materials used in the assessments were different based on the racial makeup of the child?
So when we looked at the disability categories and we looked at attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, some of the formal assessments that are done are actually the most subjective out of all of the different disabilities, right? You're not, it's a lot of rating scales that are given to teachers, to parents, to people that know the child. So out of all the disability categories, that one lends itself most to subjectivity. So that's one piece that we really want to look into. The other thing that the Equity Council Subcommittee in Special Education really looked at is the amount of time our students were spending in the intervention process. So in previous presentations to the Board, I've shared with you how our tier one is our classroom intervention, right? And then if a student is not responding to those interventions in the classrooms, there may be some more specific, some small group interventions, and that's what's called our SRBI, or scientifically research-based intervention process. And what you're trying to do is kind of rule out the evidence of a disability before you refer to special education. What we are finding is our black and brown males were actually going through that intervention process quicker. They were going to referral quicker. So there's some assumptions that that was done with positive intent, right? To get support. But we have to take a look at that and dig deeper. We, again, I think we did a really nice job digging into some of that data, and now this recommendation, we'll talk about some of the next steps and implications for that.
Thank you.
So I think it's interesting that the disability, the ADHD, and then we're also talking about discipline data, because I think those two things, ADHD can very often be associated with behaviors, right? So it's really interesting how those two pieces in the recommendations are coming together.
Yeah.
So on the discipline data, are we looking at if implicit bias might be part of the cause, all of the cause, for increased percentages for black and brown students? Do we also think that there might be implicit bias in keeping the number down on the white students as well?
That's actually a beautiful segue into the discipline recommendations, Todd. It's like, you couldn't have been done better, actually.
I did look ahead, but I didn't read that far ahead.
So Sharon and Becky are going to speak to these recommendations.
So much like was referred, was mentioned by Madison, when we looked at the referrals for discipline, we saw that the handbooks for the teachers and the students, the, we looked at the handbooks for the teachers, the students, and the parents, and they were different. So I had an interest personally, because I, of course, everybody knows I don't have children, I wanted to look at the student handbook. And Becky went to look at the teachers and the parents, and she came back and said, the verbiage is all different. And so we all sat there and said, well, how are they describing behavior when it's all different? How can we expect them in school to be knowing how to act if it's being told to them in three different ways, you know? And so the messaging has to be consistent. And then there was a conversation that we were having, because we were also having that conversation of kids going from Henry James to the high school, feeling and understanding and thinking that they're doing okay, but then they get to the high school and all of a sudden, they're in trouble. Okay? The second is, all schools should explicitly teach expectations of behavior to the students. And so with that one, we were discussing, how do we go about teaching that? And so some of our conversations were, we could be very creative in doing that and getting our kids involved in, you know, they could create TikToks maybe, or they could use social media, but get them involved in creating how that should be demonstrated. Don't let the teachers be the ones that create that mechanism, you know?
So Sharon, if I may, also with that, the first recommendation, when the Subcommittee was looking, and they did that deeper dive, right? And they said, okay, we need to know a little bit more about discipline. And what were kids being referred for? And these three Ds came up consistently. Disruption, disrespect, and defiance. And it caused us to go, well, what does that mean? How is that defined? That was part of the reason why we were looking in the handbook, right? And what we were finding is that there wasn't necessarily a clear operational definition across all students, parents, teachers, and yet these were behaviors that were being referred for. So it's to have a common definition of that, to operationalize that, and then to really create some potential scenarios in that, you know, what does disruption look like? What does disrespect look like or defiance look like? To get at that. So Todd, more pointedly, before Becky reviews the last two recommendations, we know that, you know, these recommendations, although they're broken down, special ed and discipline, they're not mutually exclusive, they're not siloed recommendations. Could some implicit bias be impacting this? Most certainly, it could be. So as we implement that training with fidelity, we're going to have to take a look. It could be a number of these things, given a different situation, but these are some things that certainly were highlighted as we looked deeper and asked more questions of this data.
Yeah, I would expect both columns to move a little bit.
Because we had a conversation also, just real briefly, around cultural as well, you know, how things are viewed culturally, you know, from a standpoint of black and brown versus other ethnicities when you come to how things are read and understood, you know?
And I would add to this second recommendation, that all schools means all levels, right? So we need to make sure that the students in the elementary school know what's expected of them, in particular, our sixth graders coming into seventh grade, if they're coming from five different elementary schools with five different cultures and different understandings of what's okay and what's not okay. And then they're coming to Henry James, and it's like, oh, that's not okay here, I didn't know that. So the vertical alignment of these things, age appropriate, right? Certainly age appropriate, but when we define these things, let's start it early and make it uniform.
Good point.
So the third recommendation from the discipline Subcommittee is similar to something that Kevin talked about with special ed when he said about continual and ongoing analysis, right? So what we're saying here is that we expect administration in each school, or we would love to recommend that administration in each school should evaluate, report, and take action on any recurring pattern of referrals, and not just, oh, we did an audit of data, and therefore we want you to look at it now, but keep that up. You know, it's a continuing process and ongoing.
There's such power in this process and looking at our data. And making that actual stop and pause and observe and ask questions, that process of inquiry, is important to have a cycle, so it's not just once a year, because we could be very well making adjustments that benefit all kids, asking ourselves questions about what's going on here, that could really help along the way.
And we were just talking about, what gets measured gets managed, right? That line. line. So, you know, we have to keep that being looked at. And then our final recommendation is to mandate that all staff should be trained, well-versed, and educated in restorative practices. And for those of you that aren't in the education world, so when we talk about restorative practices, this is something in place of a disciplinary, more punitive approach. So restorative practices involve having conversations and, you know, talking about your relationship. And it can go all different levels, and it can go up to, it could be student to student, it could be teacher to student, you can have a restorative practice in your whole classroom with 25 kids.
Like a mediated conversation?
So, yeah. And, and it gets to the, the environment, the classroom environment that you, like, I start the year with a circle, and we talk about my, our expectations for how things are going to go in the room. And sometimes we celebrate in circles, and sometimes we say, "Things aren't going so great. How are we going to fix this?" So it's kind of like, you know, everybody has a talking stick and, but that, that's a piece of restorative practice. That's not all of it. But, you know, there's research that shows that's much more effective than a punitive, you know, "Okay, you're going to have to stay after school now."
So a lot of times, just the word discipline, for some conjures up punitive measures, where if you look at, Neil and I use this all the time, the root word of discipline is disciple, and disciple means to teach. So restorative practices are really about teaching into the behavior. So you made this choice. That choice of behavior harmed the community, whether it be the cafeteria, your classroom, an interaction that you had with a peer. So what are you going to do to repair the harm that has been done? And that's where the teach comes in and can be extremely powerful. So we either see an increase in the behaviors that we want or a decrease in the behaviors that we don't. So again, these are not recommendations that are in vacuums, right? They are meant to work together to overall address the data trends that we're seeing and where we want to grow and be better. And it seems-
Well, you just recognize, I'm sorry, Susan, in the data, right, the data's looked like that for some time. Your practices have been what they've been for some time, and the data hasn't changed, right? And that's why the data is so powerful. And that's, you know, the, the comments about measurement and all those things. This district has worked hard over time under that continuous improvement model and setting goals. And I think when you do that, you're able then to make this, this work more systemic and more, you move the needle, right? You, you, you start to get, I guess, you know, teachers' attention, right? We have, I'm not going to get into it, but teachers have work plans that have goals in them, right? And when everybody knows that they're accountable for different things and you have that buy-in, I think it works more.
Yes.
Yep. I was just going to say, to me, from, based on what you're, you're all saying, that these are not stagnant recommendations that you do yearly. Like, this has to live and breathe and change on a regular basis so that you're staying with it and you're seeing your progress in short chunks, so that you know what's working.
And I think when, like, we were talking, like, and I was on the special ed piece, but we're all in all of it for a lot of the pieces too, but I think when we have the students participating in some of the discipline discussion, as in, you know, how are they going to, the handbooks and behavior and expected behavior, and basically character building, which is what we've been working on for years, this is kind of just another avenue of it, and it affects every student. All this work, we're calling it equity work, but it's equity work because it affects every student. And every, any student that can find more success because of things that are put in place that make more, more sense affects every student, every classroom, every teacher, and the whole success of the district. So, you know, when people kind of, I want everybody to understand that everyone was involved in this and worked so hard on this because we want a better district, period, for all of our students.
That's right. So last night, right, we participated in graduation. We have a poster right in our Board of Ed conference room around the vision that we have and those competencies. Every kid, no matter what, to your point, Tara, that we want to ensure when they receive that Simsbury High School diploma, this is what this means. This is what this means. So it's, it's all certainly to that end.
Can I see a question? I may be jumping the gun in terms of next steps, but I, you know, from time to time, we, this board has talked about the, the issue or the opportunity to do a little bit better on transitions, whether it's from, you know, elementary to junior high or junior high to high school. There, there's, there seems to be an opportunity for us to look at that a little deeper. And I'm hearing inconsistent handbooks, I'm hearing maybe a misunderstanding of expectations when you, when you go to that next level. Is this something that could be incorporated into that? It seems like it's a natural. You know, what, because again, whether it's just basic curriculum or behavior, it, it just seems like this, this whole, we keep coming back to transitions in some form or fashion that, that maybe I think we should put on the table a little bit more than we have.
Jeff, we actually have a very specific action in our strategic plan in our, in the culture goal. Again, this is all connective tissue here, specifically to transitions.
Great.
Right? And it's not just transitions relative to transitions you've heard me talk about in the past in special education. It's special ed, it's general ed, it's how do we move grade levels, buildings, expectations, how do we be clear? So we're all pulling in that same direction of that vision for the graduate.
See, you knew I was going to ask that question.
I didn't, but I'm glad I had an answer. But you did ask about next steps. So here are three kind of very pointed, timely next steps. So Neil gave an update around the Director of Equity and Access and our, the, those who are moving to the next round of interviews, that will actually happen on Monday. And the performance task, we actually ask teachers and administrators to respond to something and present that to the next committee. The performance task is going to have the candidates take this information, our data, they're going to be looking, I'm sure, at some of the, what we're presenting tonight, these recommendations, and creating an entry plan, like what's going to happen in the first 30 days of your position, and 60 days and 90 days. And that's not to say that all of this work is going to be on one person's shoulders, but certainly the Director of Equity and Access will be leading some of these next steps and recommendations.
I probably should have asked this a long time ago, but I'm, I'm just noticing it for the, for the first time. Director of Equity and Access, could you explain the equity and access? I, I don't remember the and access part of it, and I want to make sure that I understand what, what the words mean.
Absolutely. So when we were, when the board asked us to consider this new position, that title was really important because what we, it, it's certainly under the Office of Teaching and Learning, and what we want to do is to provide equitable experiences where all students can access the curriculum, instruction, assessment, extracurricular experiences that all students in Simsbury should have, so that we can reach that vision of the graduate. So whether that be a student with a disability, a student of another population, a male versus that, they all have access to those equal opportunities and success that this district is known for.
Great, thanks.
Absolutely. So one of the next steps is that we're taking these recommendations to our Administrative Council meeting. So we have a pretty significant planning meeting in the summer, and this allows our administrators to, from the district level of our strategic plan, how do we prioritize this work for kids? Looking at this data, what are our next steps that make sense for alignment at the building level? So again, we're all pulling in the same direction. So that is going to happen within the next couple of weeks here.
I think what's, what's great is that in our own journey as an Administrative Council this year, where, was led around a text and, and a data dive as well, and as we said early in the meeting, there's a significant alignment between what the group looked at and what our administrators, you know, dug into and looked at. So we're not coming to this in, in a divergent way, you know? We're coming to this with some pretty consistent recommendations from both places.
That's great. Which again, are really nice glue and continuity with our strategic plan, which, which is our work, and it's our work for kids. And then the final next step, more immediate, we're working right now on the development and sharing of materials. So in our Director of Equity and Access interviews, many people said, "We looked on the website, the equity statements, I said, 'It's under construction, we know, we're, we're moving towards that end.'" But we want to use some of this data and those recommendations to be transparent with what did Equity Council find? What are these recommendations? What is the work? So again, we can be clear and consistent with everyone. So certainly a website, we are, one of our colleagues, Martha Hogan, is, is working on some type of printed brochure that highlights some of this data. So again, we can be very clear with what our goals are for the future and how well are we doing at marching towards success to those ends.
Yeah, at, within the district website, not a separate website. We're going to have a dedicated tab?
Yes, it's in the dedicated tab area of equity.
Perfect.
I'm so thankful to have worked with this group of people. I learned so much about so much.
And I would just say from my lens, you know, greatly appreciate the effort and the time, knowing how much time was put in during a period in history here where it would have been real easy to say, "We don't have time."
Oh, and it was passionate time.
Right, and I think that helps us to move the work forward.
It was a pretty amazing group of people.
It's great. So a lot more to come here, for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
I thank you all for your dedication to this and helping us be a better district because that's really ultimately where we're headed with all of it, is to try and just be better for everybody.
Madison, thank you for your commitment and involvement in this.
Yes, Madison.
Never missed a meeting, never, in two years.
They have to graduation, and you're here.
Georgetown's lucky, so.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
You'll be there and making changes.
Congratulations.
I mean, I really, I mean, everybody, everybody knows that, but she was, she was with us from the beginning, and she's been here with us to the end, you know? So you have to send us back letters, you know?
It pushed our thinking and really gave us nuggets to contemplate every single time.
She challenged us. Yes, she did.
That's great. Glad to hear it. And don't be a stranger, you're going to be home for vacations. You know where we are.
Don't worry, I will.
Thank you very much, all of you, with Sue's appreciation. All right. So now we are on to the ESSR grant overview.
Yes, this is not quite as engaging, but was, is important to give an update. We've talked about the grants and the funding we've received from the federal government over the course of the year. So we just wanted to, as the year closes, give a snapshot in time of where we are and kind of what's to come here, because it's a pretty involved process, particularly on the, the last grant that we've received. So again, these are federal funds. The purpose of the funds is to provide states as a whole, towns, and also boards of education dollars to respond to the, the impact of the pandemic. And there's three, there's been three phases of these grants, and we have a little chart I'll go over in a second. They all have kind of different purposes and how they were communicated, hopes for different outcomes, certainly different varied allocations. So we've put a little chart together. I think that's a good snapshot of what that looks like. The first, the ESSR one dollars came early on, I think it was like late summer, just as we were preparing to open up. That act was passed, and it was kind of under that general purpose of, "This is to help you survive what's going on."
I love that, yeah.
We received eighty, a little over $83,000. It was in alignment with our Title I funding at the time, and we used those dollars to dig ourselves out of a hole with technology and really get to that one-to-one. So it really allowed us to springboard, very helpful. So certainly the status of that is, is the grant's completed, you know, those purchases have been made, and obviously that happened already this year. Then ESSR two came along significantly more dollars, over $400,000. The impact there was just supposed to help you thrive, right? And you're in this situation now, how are you moving forward? Very helpful, these dollars, as we talked about all throughout the year, to help close that budget gap, but specifically the new teachers we had to hire to help create the vision and be sustainable with what we did for distance learning. So when we look back on how we created the distance learning model for our elementary schools, really in reflection in terms of not only delivery of instruction, but to try to lessen the burden on the classroom teacher, I think we were spot on with that model, and we were able to pay for quite a few of the new hires through there. So those funds were very helpful. The last round, ESSR three, is to help districts transform coming out of the pandemic. So we received in our district $981,000. Twenty percent of that is specifically earmarked to address learning loss. So we've, I did a presentation already to the board earlier on what some of our intervention summer programs are going to look like, some of the things we're going to do different in the fall at both the middle school and the high school level. So we're going to, you know, it's, it's, it's close to $200,000 that will be dedicated and committed to do that, and we'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about some of the other dollars. But, um, not that one yet. That one, perfect. All right. So there is the process though here with, with the ESSR three is quite different. It's much more involved. As part of the process, we have to share what they're saying is your return to school plan. What is ironic is we're in school since September. So what we can't forget is that in much of the country, students never return to school. So it's a federal grant, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all in terms of how they've presented it. So this part of the application, quite honestly, we, we put a bullet up there, the timeline and the task seems regressive, it doesn't really fit. So Sue and I and Neil are working through that process right now. We had a successful return. We have, as you'll recall, an incredibly detailed school opening return plan. So what we're going to do is work on just kind of modifying that as we prepare to move forward into the fall. But we know that significant changes are going to occur, right? We know that people have questions about quarantining, testing, mask wearing, all those very important topics, and we will have more information on that. We'll put some out there now in this rebuild, but as we get closer to the summer, we'll have much more detail on that. Again, we talked about the 20% denoted for the learning loss, and you need to meet the requirements of the application to receive the funding, which are pretty detailed.
So you can't just make it like a historical document, like this is what we did last summer?
We vetted that, you know what I mean? Because our plan was so detailed. So we're going to do a, a, a much stripped-down modified version, and as we talk about, as we go through in, in next steps, when we get to the end, we need to get some input on that from the public, so we have a, have a plan to do that. But it'll be a modification of where we're at. So in terms of kind of our timelines and tasks and where we are, the grant assurances have been agreed to. That's when you go in and kind of agree to all the terms and conditions, right? So we had the initial sign-off at the end of May. The State Department of Education has to provide their plan to the federal government, June 7th. We have a June 23rd timeline to update our safe return to in-person instruction. So that's what I mean about being, it, it's an awkward timing, and when we communicate to our parents, we'll explain that. We'll explain that this, where we are in the process right now is tied to a grant application, and we'll give it the right, give it the right context so people don't say, "Okay, this is what it's going to look like in the fall when we open up." So these are some of the things that we'll talk about in the updated plan, right? It's kind of what I've just been, been talking through. So it is, I think the important thing, it's a snapshot in time. We have talked about how encouraged we are by the state metrics, the community metrics, the percentage of, of individuals that have been vaccinated. So we really hope to have a very normalized opening. That's what we've told our principals to plan for, and we'll respond to anything different from that or any mandates or executive orders that come different from that. But I felt it was prudent that we needed to allow people to start planning to move forward into the, into the fall.
So I'm going to speak a little bit, and I apologize, one of these slides got out of order, but what we've been talking about, potential for these funds in order to transform- But what we've been talking about, potential for these funds in order to transform. So as Matt had shared, about twenty percent needs to be allocated for learning loss. Our summer enrichment opportunities, I've shared those at a previous presentation to the board around our interventions. Those total about seventy thousand dollars. We are increasing our elementary math tutors, as you know, in previous presentations. I've shared with you some of the math data, our cohort math data. And we don't like the, the direction where some of that data is going. So how do we provide some more direct elementary math support as well as middle school math support? You know, Becky Rosenthal was here for Equity Council, but she is going to be that teacher who is going to provide that intervention. So there will be some very focused small group instruction and a focused class for students that demonstrate that need. And she's also going to work with teachers in their classrooms about what classroom interventions will look like. But those are the dollars denoted for those efforts. And then as far as transformation, again, this is very preliminary, and we'll talk more about next steps and timeline. Sharon, you mentioned the, the concept of mental health, right? And we want to continue, as social emotional learning is one of our founding principles of this reopening, really look at any additional mental health supports that we need to provide our students and staff, very important. From the pandemic, we've also enhanced our software capabilities. We've, in a very quick way, unrammed to different technologies that we never thought possible prior to. So looking at some of the software that we learned about, utilized, that works for student learning and instruction. We're also looking at a specific, different curriculums that are standards based around social emotional learning and providing some of that very specific scope of those skills that we want to teach to students at specific grade levels that are developmentally appropriate. And then finally, any recommendations coming out from Equity? We understand that we, there might be some budgetary implications for that work and having the ability to respond to some of that professional development. So again, these aren't hard and fast dollar amounts. They are some preliminary thoughts and recommendations for potential grant fund use.
Some other, thanks Sue, some other considerations on that. We have a two-year period with the dollars. So I think it's important to, and board members certainly know this from past experience, we don't want to create major cliffs for ourselves, right? We don't want to create situations where we bring people on, they have a great value, and all of a sudden, that need is there and we haven't appropriated that in the budget. So this is a balance of where you put the dollars and how we have continued conversations as a board during budget season to ensure that we have those, those things covered, you know? And I know years ago, with the era funding, we needed to be, we needed to be careful with that. The other pieces, we're in, we're in great shape right now, as we said, with the metrics around the virus. I think it's prudent to have some of these dollars in hold in case we have to react to something in a different model instructionally again. And that's another reason why these dollars have a, have a two-year period, because there still could certainly be some unknown there. From a staffing standpoint, we may need to address or do things differently. Ventilation is another area of access for these funds and is something we can talk about as we get further into this. What's that next level of ventilation improvement? We did some significant studies last year, made a lot of improvements in our buildings with airflow and handlers and what we've done. But, you know, we do have inequities in terms of buildings, how they're cooled, systems and everything else that have, we've had to deal with this week, right? So those are issues long-term we can think about too, with dollars we have and maybe even dollars that have become accessible on the town side that we'll learn more about from Amy down the road a little bit. So a lot to think about there, but these are the initial plans with where we are.
Where did the nine-eighty-one, four-forty number come from?
How did they figure the number?
Was that something that was given to us?
Yes, yeah. So that's a grant allotment. And that's what Simsbury Public School Grant Allotment was eligible for, based on their determining factors in the district. A lot of it has to do with need of the community. I don't know the exact metrics that they're looking at there. I know that Title I spending is one that they correlate quite significantly with. So there are some districts, obviously, that have received enormous amounts of money, right? This is, this is a good-sized portion, I think West Hartford's four to, they're over four or five million dollars, I think.
And the money comes to the district, not to the town?
The town has a separate part of this, where they receive funds, this comes directly to the LEA, to the, to the Board of Ed.
So it's not for them to distribute to us, it's for us to use? Correct. The town's not distributing funds to the Board of Ed? It's your money to spend?
Correct.
We don't need approvals?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So as far as our communication process and, and timeline, so as Matt shared, a significant part of this grant, grant application is that we need to get feedback from our stakeholders. So there'll be a letter explaining this context and explaining the, the need for an updated plan. Again, even though the timeline seems a little off and regressive, so providing some of that why in that communication. So that'll happen the week of the 21st, where we will link any updates to our website or be asking in another way for feedback. We want to make sure that we make it easy and accessible for everyone to provide that feedback.
The state actually did a pretty good job with creating a template that has like six pieces to discuss, right? There's mitigation strategies in there, areas like that that will update.
Vaccination opportunities, access to testing.
Take the community on that data, you know?
So then what will happen is we will take that feedback and again, make other revisions throughout the months of June, July, and August. And also keeping in mind, again, based upon how our vaccination rates are going, the rates of transmission for this virus, we may very well at any moment receive additional guidance and information leeway, quite honestly, from the Department of Public Health, from the State Department, from the CDC, even from our partners at the Farmington Valley Health Department. And then we will submit our final application, it is due on August 23rd.
Can I just, just going through the presentation, it just made me think that, how many kids have not been in school at all? Have only done distance this year?
I can give you the K-6 number and give you it as a percent. I was, I was actually worried somebody was going to ask, because I don't have. But I do, I have the exact K-6 number. You'll remember that on October 1st, we had almost exactly four hundred kids who had chosen distance learning.
Yep.
Almost exactly one-third of those came back to school. So we have two-hundred-and-sixty-eight kids that finished the year in K-6 in remote learning.
Okay.
So it went from four hundred on October 1st. The last day we let you move was like in mid-May. And once it got to mid-May, we just said, we're too close to the end of the year to be changing teachers. And that was, so exactly a third of the kids went back, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight, who haven't been back to school at all in those grade levels and probably about.
That's where I think about that social emotional component, particularly for those kids who haven't been in a building. In a year.
I was going to say about fifty to sixty at Henry James. And a little over a hundred and thirty or forty at Simsbury High School. But I can get the exact numbers and give them to Matt and Katie for your Friday update.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that.
That's why I asked Sue, the other Sue, the last meeting about our support that we have.
Yes.
Right. Because that's what I've, you know, because all the data and all the news has been that, you know, there's going to be, you know, the kids are going to have a need.
Right.
You know, for services. And, and when Neil talks about kids who haven't been back in the building, that just makes you think, you don't know what those services are going to be, you know? And do we have the support for them? You know, I know we have now, but are we going to need more? You know, are we going to need to provide more?
So a couple of things, I think that that's one of the reasons why we have that placeholder for the mental health supports.
Right, that's why.
The continuation of the social emotional learning. And, and just because a family opted in for that distance learning didn't mean that they didn't participate in those lessons and major efforts to bring our students who were participating in distance learning into a community experience.
Right.
And we're going to need opportunities to pivot, depending upon what we're seeing upon that return, around the social emotional health. If you, as well, you'll recall that you approved the calendar so that those first couple of days of return are early release days.
More of a slow walk into.
Slow step, just like we did.
With learning time for teachers.
Yep.
Learning time for teachers, professional development, and quite honestly, some stamina build. Because we can't disregard stamina build in all of this either.
Right, and because we don't know what exactly September might look like, but they could be back to traveling to specials and all these things they haven't done in a long time.
They will be doing that.
I think so too.
I think so too.
Good.
I could also let you know that as a way to end the year and bring those online classes together, all nineteen of the distance learning elementary classrooms did have activities that were outdoor education. They did, over these last few weeks, they all came together at least once. And the teachers organized outside activities.
That's wonderful.
To get their class, to get their class together.
That's awesome.
And finally, principals, to your, you know, your point, Jeff, around transitions, they're already thinking about, how do we utilize the day leading up to those first days differently? That students aren't necessarily new students, but how do we differentiate opportunities for them to reorient themselves to coming into the physical space of our buildings? And they're already thinking about those plans.
That's great. Glad to hear it. Thank you all, that was a great update. So now we are back to our second public audience.
Can I, well, wait, can I just ask, just, I don't mean to belabor, but since this is, we're not going to meet for a while. Any update on Latimer and where we're with that?
Grant application, you have the specifics.
Grant application is on track. Jeff Wozinski and Jason met last week, I know, and there's a, I get copied on the back and forth. I'm really happy Jeff and Jason are working on it.
Yeah.
Because it's really quite complicated.
Great.
But every time Jeff assures me, we're right on track for that June 30th submission of the grant to the state, to the Office of School Construction and Grant Reimbursement. So still some more work to do, but we probably have, all the key documents are already done. And there's just some minor documents that have to be cleaned up. So very good shape. And the next thing after that would really be the process to sort of turn the project over to the Public Building Committee.
Okay.
And that's.
Would go out to bid.
So once the grant is approved, it goes to public building?
Correct.
And that's December-ish?
Before that, we want to get a, we want to get a RFP for more specific architectural designs before that.
Okay, okay.
So.
You'll keep this posted.
I will keep you posted.
Good question.
Thank you.
Well, just go ahead. I have another one, but I'll leave it for later.
You're not letting go of your facilities and your task force.
Well, all right, I'll throw it on the table then. I mean, obviously, there was another big project put before our friends at the Zoning Commission.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And I just, is there, can we tie into that better? I mean, the reason, part of the reason we're in this mess is that we've been going down separate paths. And I'm fearful if, if we're not, again, I'm not.
This is the second development?
Yeah, I'm not trying to get into their business and I don't want them in ours. It'd be just great if we could get updates from them somehow, some way, so we're not, you know.
Well, incited by a big development.
Like got us in, you know, partially got us into the position we're in.
Right, because if that hit, we'd need a different plan.
Right.
Yes.
And then maybe we don't put, you know, facilities enrollment never is gone, we just go on hiatus.
Never gone.
It's never gone.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, public audience. So if you can state your name, your address, and you each have three minutes.
Michelle Page, Seven Hampshire Lane. And I'm just curious as to what it will take to get the masks removed from our children? If you could give me an idea of where the board sits on that?
So generally, public audience, we, it's not a back and forth, it's for you to state your, your situation? I mean, I know you and I have emailed about that.
Yep, yep, and, yeah. And, and, and my, my comments to that was that the State Department of Education did give guidance, but that's not really a mandate. And I know that there are other districts that have already done the removing of the masks. And I know that a lot of them are waiting to like do it in September. And I'm just trying to see as a constituent, if there was some information that I could provide to speed that process along. Because.
I know that the DPH mandate we've been given is in place till the end of the school year.
Well, I've heard that the mandate is actually required for some of the funding, but I wasn't sure as to how much that actually means to the town of Simsbury.
I haven't heard that it's tied to any funding.
It's tied to one of the COVID relief packages.
Yeah, at this point.
Okay. All right.
But we, I mean, I know that's an area that everybody has a lot of questions about. I know it's an area, we're very hopeful that with where we are right now, with the virus and the level of vaccinations in town, that we could start with a normal opening. But I do know that we haven't had the autonomy to make those decisions. And I do believe that we will get more guidance on that coming up.
So you're reading the guidance as a mandate? Is that correct?
It is a mandate right now. I, I, there's no question about that. We've been told that in schools, indoors, masks need to be on until the end of this school year. And I don't know of any Connecticut districts that are doing anything different.
Are you aware of the, the health issues and the mental health issues that our children are facing right now? I know it's been in the media, several different papers have picked up increases dramatically in ERs. And I know you guys were just talking about distance learning. I know a lot of parents, you know, some did opt out just because they didn't want to deal with this mask crap. It does promote a lot of anxiety and has a lot of other issues that are tied to it, it's not normal. And the kids, especially at the younger ages, need all of that facial cues and the social and the, they need to see their friends. And I just don't want that point to be lost on the board. I also want to mention that the study that is linked to the guidance from the CDC is not all that great. And if you haven't read it, I can definitely send it to you. I have a couple of copies here. I, there are a thousand different holes in it, and I'm a numbers person, and I can go through them if you'd like, or if you want to call me some other time. Glad to tell you all the different ins and outs of that. It is only like four or five pages, I can send it to you, you can read it. I've sent you other studies, I think at the beginning, all this COVID stuff is not just, you know. I also wanted to, you did say that most of the population is vaccinated. So I also wanted on record that seventy percent of Connecticut is vaccinated, everybody over eighteen anyway. So if it was just to protect the staff, we're there. I mean, they're taking masks off in every other employment. So, I mean, I just don't, I just, yeah. If you, if there was any way you could make it optional, I would appreciate it. I understand not everybody is going to be, woo-hoo, take these things off, we're done with them. I get that, there's a lot of fear and people have their, you know, their rights. I want my children to not have to wear them.
We appreciate that. Thank you for coming and speaking with us. But hang in there for two more days and, and then hopefully we get good information over the summer.
Do you know when you would expect that new guidance?
I've not got any word on it yet.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I could speak? Yes, please. Hi, my name is Shannon McLean, I'm at Two Hayes Road. And I just wanted to address the masks in the school. And I really wish that you all really fight for the fall, so you take them off as an option. Like she said, like a choice, you know? I know that.